...meeting of the Carson City Library Board of Trustees to order with item one and progressing for a little call.
Chairperson Hayes.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Solinger here. Trustee Graeber.
Here.
Trustee Liberati.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
One is present.
Okay, moving on to item two, public comment. If any members of the public wish to address the board, they can at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the meeting minutes from the October 27th, 2016 meeting, because everybody had a chance to review those minutes. And do we have any changes or qualifications to those? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll accept a motion if it's seconded.
Okay. Motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item four, the Friends of the Carson City Library Report.
Book manager's report is in your packet. We've got a lot of things going on in the next month. She mentioned all of them, I think. I have our treasurer at the Chamber of Commerce mixer as we speak, hucksturing for us, promoting the trivia night tomorrow night and the New Year's Eve party, tickets which go on sale sometime tomorrow, so. It's happening now.
Yeah, I know that Joe sent both of those to me today.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item five, possible action and discussion on 2017 holiday and staff development day closures.
Okay, so what you have in your packet on page thirteen and fourteen is the calendar. I've also put it up on the projector there, so you can take a look. The numbers aren't showing up on that one. But anyway, so what we have here, what you approved last year in December was our closures for holidays as well as non-holidays but around, surrounding holidays for staff, since we are open seven days a week. And in the staff development days, and in those staff development days, we're including team building in those as well. Activities that might accompany those are training here in the library, but also team building outside of the library before we've gone to Baker and Taylor to see the process of how our books come here and how they come here process. The juvenile detention facility has a short ropes course or small ropes course that go really high, so there's not a lot of danger there, but a ropes course that can be used for team building as well. And then we also have one early closure on this calendar for, before the Thanksgiving holiday. Now, as an example, what you're gonna see, why you see two calendars, is you have one here that has by each month, the number of hours we are open. And then at the top, you have the number of hours we would be open for the year and the number of hours we were open for 2016. So it just gives you an idea of how many hours the library is open. We are looking at, because we won't be closing as many days because of our adjustment in schedule, being able to add sixty-three hours within the year. So we would be at 2,764 hours open for 2017, pending, of course, any weather closures or any closures deemed by the board. One of the things that we are looking at for 2017 is interior painting, and so that may require us to close as well, so. Is there any questions?
Because it involves those hours change, so we have one day off for Christmas.
So we only, we generally only have one day off for Christmas, but to give staff a holiday, so like for instance, with our scheduling to get, so Sunday, Christmas is on Sunday this year, to give all staff a holiday, we were closed at 24th and 25th, so it's Saturday, Sunday. Here, most of our staff are now on a Monday through Friday schedule, and so we'll still be able to give our Tuesday through Saturday staff their holiday, but we won't have to close a day per day for that, because we'll have enough staffing to cover.
Okay. The public will appreciate it, I'm sure. Don't know about the staff, but the public does. So okay, the new hours, you're not Tuesday through Saturday and Monday through Friday? Or Monday through Friday?
So right now, we have Monday through Friday staff. We have two full-time staff that are still working Sunday through Thursday.
Okay.
And then we have staff working Tuesday through Saturday. So that's what it kind of looks like.
And is that rotating?
It does not rotate.
Okay, so that was their choice?
Correct.
Okay.
So when we move to, when we move to have half of our staff Sunday through Thursday, staff made the request if they wanted to stay, stay on a Tuesday through Saturday or change, and actually half of the staff elected to go to Saturday through Thursday. And there are still staff that want to stay on a Sunday through Thursday schedule, so. And then, so for instance, why we only have one early closure is the other holidays, so any holiday that falls on a Monday, we close at four o'clock anyway on Sunday, so we don't need to do an early closure that day.
Okay.
So we want to leave it this way or change it?
Um, yep, you can, you can make any recommendations of this calendar that you want. You can leave it this way.
You can change it later if you need to.
You can change it.
So is there any discussion as to changes that we think should be made to this or could be made to this? It's not been over anything else?
I'd just say a nice long weekend kind of wasted in February.
So, so the seventeenth and eighteenth, that is, the reason we specifically chose those days is it's the Google Apps for Education Summit at the high school, where they bring in people from Google to teach on all of those topics. And I don't know, Natalie participated in it last year, correct, with the school district? But one of the things that we use internally here is Google Apps for Work, which includes calendaring, Google Drive, and so it would be very beneficial for our staff to attend that training. It does happen to fall on that holiday weekend, but it is very expensive to bring Google Apps to your community if you do not attend someone else's training.
Right.
Riding on their goat tails.
Makes sense.
I make a motion to approve the 2017 calendar with days as noted.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item six, the Library Director Administrative Reports.
Okay, so continuing on with the pie charts that you have in the front, it means you're in a budget of items. Your first item, again, this is the library funding revenue, so these are, these are the funds that we have that we can expend. Generally, it does not change unless we've been, we've received another grant or we've received additional funding from the Friends of the Library or in the gift fund. So that's what you'll see there. The next page, which is page twenty, this is our expenditures to date. And we are thirty-three percent of the year of apps, and we are thirty-one percent spent in our budget. Then if you turn the next page, then you'll see, so page twenty-one, these are city funds, our one-on-one general funds, and you'll see the expenditures here. We still have not spent in some of our line items, which is usually normal for some of those line items, such as facility contracts and office equipment rental, depending on how, how we have those, sometimes those are quarterly charges as well, and so those would be coming through. What you're seeing here, it says October, I did not update that to November, but this is a November funding sheet here. The city only has expenditures at this point in time through September, based on when I was able to run the reports. So all the P cars, all those charges were cleared through September. Couple days after this was done, it was cleared through October, but we won't see November's hit until later. We just submitted our November P car, or October P cars.
Yes.
For the city. So it is, we are always a little bit behind in the expenditures in the city budget. So are there any questions on the city budget? Okay. So our gift fund, what you'll see here is, I've broken it out to Friends funding, which is in the gift fund, as well as the gift funds that are in the gift fund, and the expenses in both of those. You'll see those in separate pie charts as well. Are there any questions specifically here? One item that you will see has not hit is under the gift fund funds, the money that was approved for the back room, that did come in under what was budgeted, and so that will be hitting soon. It should be kind of now.
It's cut this week.
Because that final check was cut, the back room project is complete. But you'll see it expended already in the Friends funding, because that was the first payment that we made towards the project. Are there any questions here? So moving on to page thirty-three, these are our grant fund expenditures. So these are our expenditures for the summer reading program, our bullying free zone. If you saw online or in the paper, the Think Kindness program that happened over the community center was a great big hit, you'll see a poster behind you that has Think Kindness sticky notes from all of our teens. We have those up in the library, and those will be going to other city departments if they haven't already. And I encourage you guys to take a post-it and put a word or two that tells what kindness means to you. So that was part of that program. They, they, they don't use the word bullying, because it's a negative connotation, and they use the Think Kindness to get students, middle schoolers, thinking about being kind, being generous versus bullying and being negative. So it was a great program. I hope we can have him back again. He is from Reno, so he's pretty local to us. We then had mobile makerspace charges as well, and if you walked in after Diane parked the van right in front of the library, you will see the raft that is now on the van for the mobile makerspace. Vital Signs did that raft for us, and it turned out really, really, really nice.
It looks great.
We're excited about that project. Is there any questions in the grant funding? Okay. So then the last item you'll see here, this was the budget request that was put forward to the Friends of the Library, and that goes in front of their budget committee, goes in front of their executive committee, and then it goes in front of the membership in January for approval, possible modification, et cetera. So just so you're aware, that is what has been requested from the Friends for January through June of 2017 and July through December 2017, as they are on a calendar year for their physical year.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
With that, I'm going, I have a couple things to say, but I'm going to stay on with some of the other reports that are in here, as we do have two of our managers who are not here today, so I will be giving their summarized reports.
Sure. All right, moving on to item seven, the Other Administrative Reports, starting with the Grants Administration Update.
This is Diane Baker for Grants for Administration, and it's a really short report, since we've just seen you not too long ago. The main thing is, we do have the physical, actual, not just the picture, of the mobile makerspace van that's outside. It was a few days later than we expected, but we think it came out fabulous, and it's going to be used for our project, of course, and I was just speaking with Natalie of different ways that, you know, we could potentially take it out to other events to definitely promote the maker movement that we're doing with this project and moving on into other projects. So that's all I have for you today. Any questions?
Okay, so thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Moving on to item B, our Creative Learning Update.
Natalie Wood, Creative Learning Manager, the Creative Learning Department. Our first item that I have for our report is Oprah the Owl, patchwork giraffe in picture. Do you guys have it black and white or do you have it in color?
There's a color.
Okay, so you get the good picture, mine looks horrible.
There you go.
Oprah had her debut at the Nevada Day Parade. She was loved, the kids absolutely loved her, they were all over her. She went to the wine walk as well, she got into fun there as well. So she's just gonna be a new way to go out and just engage with the community and promote the library at the event. Story songs with the Nevada Arts Council resident, Mark Gomer and Jim Eagle Smith, they'll be here this Saturday. They were able to establish or secure a grant through the Nevada Arts Council to come and do an hour presentation to teach Nevada cultural history through songs and play with the kids. We're hoping to get a good turnout for that this Saturday, and the kids will actually be gonna make their own shaker and go home with a little shaker. And then the American Library Association, their conference in June, they have a video roundtable, and we submitted an application to present at that, and they accepted, and they want us to present with another library, the Indian Community Library in Arizona, about video productions within libraries and what we do. So our presentation would be on our PSAs and our relationship with the school district, and theirs would be on the video productions that they would be doing with their students in our community. So that is to just highlight what we're doing with video productions with another library at that conference, and so we're looking forward to doing that, and going in June with any of these.
And that is a national level recognition for that project.
That's so good.
Any questions on any of these?
We had turkey bingo last night, and it went really well, pretty much ended in bringing up, it's not here. I'm bringing it up because I would like to do a pan bingo around Easter. I just think it was a great opportunity, and we had a really good turnout. It was engaging, and I think the Friends of the Library could actually benefit from it to get memberships and relationships. I thought it was just one of the highlights that we have. And it was a partnership with the senior center, and they actually came over and did the bingo and really liked it and wanted to do more of it. She's all about doing bingo all over the community and just being part of the community and doing outreach and providing opportunities. So it was a fun little partnership with them, and donations from a lot of stores for the turkeys, we gave out pot of turkeys and gift cards, and some 3D printed. That's all that happened.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our Access Services Update.
Okay, so Kathy cannot be with us today due to a family emergency, but everything is okay. So one of the things that she has on here is tracking materials for problems, and you'll see a kind of a card here. That card is laminated, and then we use a wet erase to write on that card, so then we can reuse it. And that way, when this, a material, like let's say it's a broken binding, but it's not quite obvious, goes to a volunteer for repair, that volunteer then knows what to do with that item. And it makes it more efficient, and it eliminates going through multiple people to determine what is wrong with that item. So that's one of the items she has here. We then also have providing patrons with a movie. So one of the things that we are, use a lot for is for the entertainment, for that cultural aspect of our community, and we generally are very on top of and have the latest releases when they come out. And as you can see here, we have a Blu-ray and three DVD copies of Star Trek Beyond, which came out on November first, not that long ago, and then we will also be showing that at a movie night on November thirtieth.
Because it's their fifteenth anniversary and it's our fifteenth anniversary.
Okay, so that's, yes.
Okay, so with the tracking form, the patron, the borrower is notified if there's a problem with a damaged item returned?
Correct.
So they get a bill, and they fix it or replace it or anything?
So they, so they get notified first by us. We call them and say, hey.
There's chocolates all over the chair or whatever.
A dog ate your book, or something happened. And then sometimes we leave a message, sometimes we can't make verbal connection with them, and then yes, they're charged on their account, and they receive a bill in the mail saying that they need to replace that, or pay to replace that item. We don't charge late fees, but we do charge for damaged items that cannot be replaced. All of the items that would go onto that shelf are items that are beyond repair or a significant cost to repair for us. Yes.
So are we, are people pretty good at paying the replacement fee or?
Most of, most of the time they are.
They are.
We've used the audiobooks with the discs.
Yes.
Sometimes, I don't know if they're damaged or if they're just dirty. And we've reported, and I don't know whatever happens to, you know, on a phone.
So we do, we clean them, and we also have a disc cleaner that will clean scratches off of them. We generally do not charge a patron for scratches on a disc, because we can't really identify who maybe made those scratches at some point in time. If there's a gouge in it, that is a different story, and our staff will evaluate that for charging a patron. But we do, they do get cleaned, we have a volunteer who comes in and cleans them and also does the disc repair to them. We have a disc repair machine. And then, they, I mean, they wear out, so once they do, we then replace it. That's also why we buy playaways, because they're easier to not damage, and so they're more durable, they can be circulated more. Because also with a, with an audiobook that's, you know, ten CDs or ten discs thick, that going in and out of book drops and in and out of RFID.
They're not supposed to go in and out?
They do. But they, but they, that can damage them as well. We do try to put those in heavy-duty cases, but those heavy-duty cases sometimes cost as much as the audiobook.
Moving on to collection development.
Okay, I will be also reporting for Amy. Amy was, is on vacation at this moment, I believe, in New York City, so good for her. And what she's done is she's initiated what she's called Staff Picks on Facebook, and so staff has submitted to her a book that they like, and sometimes we include a summary, sometimes we don't, but then she will find a review on that book and post that on Facebook for our Facebook community to take a look at. Now, we're looking at also including that on our website and finding a way that we can put that there as well, so that our patrons can kind of see what we're reading, and if they have an interest, they can pursue those items as well. We are then working also with Creative Learning to put up collections that are specific to things going on in the library. So for instance, here, you're gonna see that there's items from our collection that can be checked out, and it was during the Think Kindness event, and so those are related to anti-bullying, bully children who've come back from bullying, inspirational books and materials that we have in the library that patrons can then take a look at and check out.
And finally, the Youth Liaison Board of Christians.
Diane. I don't know why I looked at Rex, I don't know. Okay, Teen Leadership Council and Teen Advisory Board. October's meeting, Ronnie Hanneman came for the Silver and Stars annual art contest that they did, and the students helped judge those submissions, that they had, the art submissions. The kids had a great time with that, and had a great time with it. The next one, I just have to give these kids credit, they come to all our events and they help out with everything. They were at the Think Kindness, they were there playfully and also helpfully, you know, when it's down, they get a little more playful, but they were there helping out. We had, I think, eight helping that night, three of which were actually part of Team Leadership or TAB, but interested in participating, so we're getting more regularly coming. The next meeting is on December seventh, we have more events for them coming up to help out with that. We also are working with partnership with the new E group, the new Entrepreneurs Group, to get them into that group and coordinating with them a little bit more to learn some skills outside of the library through their connection with the library. December, the big event we have is Make Your Own Gingerbread, which we have a lot of volunteers helping out with that. So they're just here all the time helping out, we're gaining more every time with the PSAs, we have more kids in here, so more opportunity for kids to hang out and volunteer. Any questions?
I'm gonna add one thing to that report, too. So it was actually brought to my attention from a community member here in Carson, but did any of you guys read the article that she spoke about that Ronnie wrote? It was in the Appeal, and it was, one of the items that came up was the oldest building in Carson City, which never name is escaping. Someone help me out here. Jack Spar.
Jack Spar.
Jack Spar. And, and the kids here just showed a lot of interest in making sure that that building doesn't go away. They, they think it's really important for that, to stay in this community, and there has actually been, from that article and from these kids bringing this up, community interest in starting a nonprofit to work with the owners of that property to try and potentially restore it or create a capital campaign in this community to restore it. So these kids initiated this. I think that's, that's really, really awesome.
They just went that picture over the bar and stole it.
Well, the actual limestone was from the quarry from Carson City.
From the prison.
From it, so it has really historic value in it.
Those kids weren't even born when the roundhouse disappeared, so.
No. But, but I think, and, you know, they were in the paper, you know, showing how much they support Carson City, and I think that's a really, that's a really good thing to see from our youth in this community, so.
Yeah, that was a pretty decent article, yeah.
That's very cool. Thank you. All right. With that, we can move on to item B, Board Member Announcements and Requests for Information. Did anybody have any announcements or ideas?
I just have one thing to add to what I told you earlier about the Friends and their activities. We're also pushing the Pedal Library at the New Year's Eve Party, telling everybody that's where our funds that we raise are going to go is to purchase that. We're showing them pictures, Sandy's passing those around tonight also, so hopefully there will be some businesses that will get excited about it and say, oh, maybe we could get them to come to our business or whatever, you know, and spend a lot of money to help us pay for it.
And CCBD is working with us to partner on that project as well.
Mr. Brown.
Oh, this is, you got it, yeah, yeah.
Vic Smith is gonna be our partner for Vic's part, and they recommended getting a special muscle power to give them, partner isn't it? So I hope, so whatever you have, let's share and give them.
All right. Anybody else? In that case, we'll move on to item nine, Public Comment. If any members of the public wish to address the Library Board, they can come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, Adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody.